The time is now 12 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Dunai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Richardson, could you call the roll?
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Mrs. Matheson?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item on our agenda will be public comments. Public comments are limited to agenda items only. The testimony is limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and their city of residence for the record. Board members may ask clarifying questions only. Our first item on our agenda will be our oath of office for our new school board members. But we don't have non-agenda items, so we have to call an agenda item before we can have testimony. Limited to items on the agenda, and so we have to call an agenda item before anyone can testify. So, we have, our goal and objective is to create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe environment where students thrive. The Honorable Superior Court Judge Paul R. Lyle will administer the oath of office to the newly elected school board members Melissa Burnett and Brandy Hardy. At this time, we do have one person signed up for public testimony on the oath of office. And they're testifying by Zoom, so just one moment.
One moment, we'll have him on Zoom.
Thanks.
Hello?
Yes, thank you. Mr. James, if you could state your name for the record and spell your last name and your city of residence.
David James, J-A-M-E-S, Fairbanks. I'm testifying actually on the board president's appointment.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for that. We had you written down for the oath of office. We'll come back to your testimony on the next action item. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to testify before the oath of office? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hardy and Ms. Burnett, if you could come forward and just stand behind your name.
Falls into the category of, you know you're getting old when? You're getting old when you swear in as a school board member, somebody who went to school with one of your children. And so, I have crossed the Rubicon. This is also my last year for swearing in school board members because I myself am required by the state constitution to retire next year. And retirement has had me thinking about the power of office. For you, the power of office and the source of it is contained in the Alaska Constitution in Article 1, Section 2. I brought my pocket copy of the Constitution with me. It reads as follows: All political power is inherent in the people. All government originates with the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the people as a whole. This section of the Constitution reminds me that our power as officeholders is not personal power. It's not a power seized. It's not a power deserved. It might be a power sought, but in the end, it is a power that is conferred. It's not a power seized, it's not a power deserved, it might be a power sought, but in the end, it is a power that is conferred. And at the end of your term, you will step down. And how you use your office for the benefit of others will be the measure of your success. So, with that reminder, please repeat after me, raise your right hands. I do solemnly affirm-
I do solemnly affirm-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the State of Alaska-
The Constitution of the State of Alaska-
And the laws of the Fairbanks North Star Borough-
And the laws of the Fairbanks North Star Borough-
And that I will honestly-
And I will honestly-
Faithfully and impartially-
Faithfully and impartially-
Perform my duties-
Perform my duties-
As a board of education member-
As a board of education member-
Of the Fairbanks North Star Borough-
Of the Fairbanks North Star Borough-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my abilities-
Now comes my favorite part. Please sign your oath, I think you have to sign it in triplicate. Welcome to government. It's too late now. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. You may both take a seat and the dice for our board reorganization. Our next item of business is our board reorganization and election of officers. We will have Mr. James for public testimony, and then we will call for other public testimony if there is any. Our goal and objective is to create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of our staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. After the public testimony, the gavel will be given to Chief School Administrator Karen Mullane to conduct the election of board president. After the election of the president, the gavel will be turned over to the newly elected president to conduct the remaining elections for vice president, treasurer, and clerk. If there's more than one nomination for an office, the vote will be taken by secret ballot. Mr. James for testimony?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I feel a fresh start is called for after the chaos of the last couple-
Can you please state your name and spell your last name on the record?
David James, J.A.M.E.S., and I live in Fairbanks. I feel a fresh start is called for, and no one on this board is better poised to bring that new beginning than Chaya Sanderson. During a period of crisis in our schools brought about by multiple external factors, including funding shortfalls, the onset of a pandemic that we were all unprepared for, and local activists unfortunately disrupting meetings, Ms. Sanderson has been laser focused on doing what's best for the children in our community. During a time when two members of this board saw fit to engage in political grandstanding and circulation of unfounded conspiracy theories to enhance their social media profiles, Ms. Sanderson has never made a point of drawing attention to herself. She's been too busy working for our children. At a time when some on this board have sought to marginalize certain groups within the student population, Ms. Sanderson has treated all students and their families equally and respectfully. At a time when too many people run for office to promote personal agendas without regard for the public they are supposed to serve, something that can be said for at least two members of this board, Ms. Sanderson has done one thing and one thing only, the job voters elected her to do. Moving forward will require effort and commitment, and that starts with the board president who has demonstrated these traits. That would be Ms. Sanderson. Teachers and staff need support, something they do not feel they are getting right now. With Ms. Sanderson as board president, they will have cause for optimism. Parents need to know that this board is working to bring our schools fully back to speed, and this requires a board president who respects them. That would be Ms. Sanderson. Students from all walks of life need to know that the school board values them all equally. No one could convey this message to them better than Ms. Sanderson. I'm asking this board to appoint Ms. Sanderson as its president and to view doing so as an important step towards putting behind us the divisiveness that has hampered our schools. We need to redirect our focus on the goal of providing every student in Fairbanks, regardless of their background or identities, with the best education we can offer them. We need a board president that teachers, staff, parents, community members, and most importantly, students can trust. A board president that puts our children first, not the personal agendas of board members.
Thank you, Mr. James, that's your two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to testify regarding the board reorganization and election of officers? Seeing none, I will turn the gavel over to Ms. Mullane to conduct the election of board president.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Just a quick overview of what will happen. There will be nominees for position of board president. If there is more than one nominee, it will be conducted through secret ballot, and you should have the ballots in front of you marked for each office. So with that, we will accept nominations at this time.
I move to nominate Chaya Sanderson to serve as president of the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education during the 2022-2023 school year. Actually, that should be until the next reorganization, which would be in, next November or end of October, so it's that understanding.
Second?
I move to nominate myself, April Smith, to serve as the president of the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education during the next year. Second?
Are there any other nominations at this time? So, the other thing that's on our agenda is to include brief bio and speeches by the nominated candidates, so at this point, we'll entertain that as an option for Ms. Sanderson.
Thank you, Ms. Mullane. Well, I've worked in this district for over 35 years within the school system itself, working with students, staff, and teachers, and been able to help students achieve their academic success under various conditions. I've been S's president for four years, and then back in the classroom helping Alaska Native Ed students. And that was the highest graduating rate of all four high schools while I was working with those students. I'm committed to do the job, I'm overwhelmed for the support, and I do try to stay focused. My passion has always been students and staff, and helping them achieve their academic success, and making pathways for our students to do that, and empowering teachers to be, to be equipped to do their job. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Smith, would you like to offer your comments?
Thank you. While I appreciate that Ms. Sanderson has been an excellent role model for me since I've been on the board, and that she is an impartial and unwavering person on the board, there are principles that guide our board's conduct. First is the Alaska State statute, and I have spent countless hours poring over the state statutes, making sure that I have the best possible understanding of what the local school board's role and the district's roles are. I would intend as board president to keep us focused on statutory roles of hiring and evaluating a superintendent, creating and adhering to board policy, managing budget, and approving curriculum. The next guiding document is our own policy, and over the past two years, we have done very little policy review and updating. I would like to see the board focus on this important role for the next year. And finally, we have our own board norms. These are four simple guidelines for proper board conduct. In my time on the board, I've witnessed many violations of these agreements, from disparaging board members publicly to a near constant use of electronic communication during the meetings. Some of these communication violations have entered into dangerous territory, and as the board president, I firmly intend to hold all of us to a very high standard of behavior. I intend to immediately gavel board members who enter into disparaging remarks, and to ask everyone on this board to remand their electronic devices to the drawer for the duration of the meeting. Another issue I intend to address is the excessive duration of our meetings. I would hold board members accountable to do their due diligence before the meeting, and I would have high expectations that board members come fully prepared, having read and understood all documents prior to engaging in the meeting. Our board needs to act in a concise manner so that our business can be conducted in a manner that does not put undue burden on the staff, board members, and most importantly, the public. People deserve to be able to observe and participate in our meetings without having to sacrifice their personal wellness, staying up until midnight to engage in important votes and information. Another reason to vote for me as the board president is that the president is the one responsible to present our budget to the assembly and the legislators. I feel called to go all out on advocating for fully funding education. I recently asked our staff to help me understand what that really looks like, and I have long-term relationships with many of the people in the assembly and the legislature whom we will find most resistant to increasing our funding. I'm an excellent public speaker and a dynamic debater, and I will use all of my abilities to impact how our higher governing bodies view an investment in education. Over the summer, I personally attended multiple Jurassic Parliament Zoom presentations on proper board conduct and Roberts rules. While I'm far from an expert, I've invested this time personally because I believe the community we all serve deserves to have issues before the board of education addressed in a smooth and timely and professional manner. The volume of work before us is unable to be accomplished without a leader who can manage time, enforce board norms, and conduct business with our executive staff in a manner that leaves them feeling safe and empowered. In closing, this is not a popularity contest. Voting for me for board president does not mean that you agree with my personal opinions, and it means that, voting for me means that you want to conduct efficient, professional, respectful business for the betterment of our students, staff, and community members. If you want to have a very productive, civil, and respectful coming year, I ask that you put your personal agendas aside and vote for the right person to do the tasks that are required by this office, and that person can only be me. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, are there any other comments before we go for the vote? Ms. Smith?
I don't have a very biased view as of my relationship to Mrs. Smith. As many of you know though, I do not always agree with her on a lot of things. I do however, am someone, I am however, someone who has witnessed the countless hours that Mrs. Smith has dedicated to understanding and doing truly the best that she can do for this board, so that then she can fully understand what she's voting for, what she wants to bring to the board. And again, I may not agree with her, but I do agree that she will run the board to the best of her ability. Thank you.
Is there any, Mr. Doran?
Just for clarification, could I get, who are the two seconds on the nominations?
Ms. Maradi and Ms. Matheson.
Okay, thank you. And then, the only thing I wanted to say is that on behalf of all the board and the nominees, I think it should be recognized that everyone here has worked really, really hard, and both our nominees have worked, put in countless hours, and continue to do that, so I just think that's an important thing for the public to be well aware of.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and ask the board to mark their ballots, and Ms. Richardson will collect the ballots, and we will count them. We do have an election, and we'd like to recognize Chaya Sanderson as the board president. And with that, I turn the meeting back over to Ms. Sanderson.
Thank you, Ms. Mullane. We'll now go ahead and do our second nomination for our next officer as vice president.
I move to nominate Tim Doran to serve as vice president of the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education for the next year.
I second.
Are there any other further nominations?
I'd like to move to nominate Mrs. Smith, Mrs. April Smith, to serve as vice president for the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District Board of Education during the 2022 through 2023 school year.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have two names on the floor, and if you will mark your ballots? Ms. Carm, will gather your ballots and tally them. Our next office is for treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurers are now open?
I nominate, I'm sorry, I nominate Erin Marotti for treasurer for the next year.
Okay. So Erin has been nominated for treasurer of the board for the education for 2022-23. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing no objection, Erin has been elected treasurer for the board of education for 2022-2023. Our final nomination is open now for board clerk.
I move to nominate Brandy Hardy to serve as clerk of the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education for the coming year.
I'll second.
Are there any other further nominations? If not, nominations are closed. Okay. So Erin has been nominated for treasurer of the board for the education for 2022-23. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing no objections, Erin has been elected treasurer for the board of education for 2022-2023. Our final nomination is open now for board clerk.
I move to nominate Brandy Hardy to serve as clerk of the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education for the coming year.
I'll second.
Are there any other further nominations? Brandy Hardy has been nominated for the clerk for the board of education 2022-23. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no objections, Brandy Hardy has been elected clerk of the board of education for 2022-2023. We have our next meeting October 31st. Oh, no. Yeah, just board comments, so. I'll start with Ms. Madison.
Thank you, President Sanderson. I want to congratulate everyone for your positions on the board, and congratulations to Mrs. Burnett and Mrs. Hardy. I do want to remind everyone that hockey is in full swing, wrestling's in full swing, we've got drama, we've got music, we have all kinds of things that our students are doing that we need to go and support. Basketball's going to be starting. It's all super exciting, and supporting our children, you know, I'm a big advocate for that, so, thanks, guys.
Ms. Marotti?
Congratulations to President Sanderson, and thank you to Mrs. Smith for offering to serve the board as president, the nomination, and welcome to the new school board members, Brandy Hardy and Melissa Burnett. I'm really excited to get to work with you guys. Thanks, everyone.
And Ms. Burnett?
I just want to say thank you to all the board members for just being welcoming and willing to answer any questions that Mrs. Hardy and I had during the process. I'm very grateful to sit in this seat. I know that it'll move a position or two, but very grateful to be here, and thank you everyone who came for the support.
Ms. Smith?
I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
I just echo what Ms. Burnett has said. I am so grateful to be sitting here and honored to have my family sitting out there. It's very surreal, and I take what Judge Lyle said very seriously, that I am here to serve my community, and I hope to do that to the best of my ability. And congratulations, President Sanderson.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. Welcome to Melissa and to Brandy to the board. It was nice getting to know each of you during the campaign, and I want to say how impressed I was with this year's board, yes, school board campaign with all four candidates. You guys really worked hard to create a positive connection with each other and with the community. All of you spoke strongly about the commitment to helping our board all work together, and I think that is something that, coming into this, it is a team, it's partnership that we're in, and we do indeed count on being working partners. So, welcome to the board. Thank you for stepping up, and also take the opportunity to thank both Les Nichols and Kenesha Radzowski for also stepping forward in their community. And then to all those who stepped forward in our board reorganization to offer your services as a nominee, and that, I think, speaks highly for our whole board trying to work together, and in the spirit of those board norms, in the spirit of what is best for students, and that's what we have here. I always say that one of the nice things about a school board versus some of the other elected offices is that we have one common interest, and that's students. And the others have to, you know, kind of duggle a lot of different things, but ours is one, and so I look forward to working with the whole board and this year. And then I just also wanted to say a big thank you to Judge Lyle. He has, for many years, I don't remember exactly how many, but for many years, has been the judge who's come over at his lunchtime to swear in the board members every year. And as I was telling him just before we started today, is it's been impressive, the number of times I've heard him quoted by board members in conversations over their terms of office and kind of just saying, remember what Judge Lyle said. He doesn't speak long. He's a good example for me, but he speaks from the heart and very sincerely and pithily. And so I just, as he mentioned, this is his last year, he'll be retiring next year, the last year to do the swearing in, but I just really want to extend a big thank you to him for his part in this great endeavor that we take on behalf of students and educators. So, thank you.
So I would like to welcome our two new board members, Ms. Hardy and Ms. Barnett. You guys both ran some pretty phenomenal campaigns. You're very engaged with community, and community was very engaged with you. You already took your oath of office, so you know the weightiness of the office that you just entered into, and I would like to just express my respect for Ms. April Smith. Everything she said had truth in it. There are things that we are tasked with as a board, to conduct our business in a manner that is timely, knowledgeable, and efficient. We have huge things in front of us this year, like every year, because it's the nature of the business that we're in, and I will challenge this board. I know my strengths, and I know my weaknesses, and so we all have a part to play in our leadership role in the office that we assume. There, with the work that's in front of us, we do have to work as a team. We have to move aside the foolishness and the rhetoric, and we have to take everything that comes before us very seriously, not saying that we haven't, but we really need to fine tune, and we really need to put the energy that is in each of the things that are going to come before us. Our superintendent's search is huge. That's going to be the leader of our district, and staff, and students, curriculum, budget, the whole thing. So I look at each one of you. I respect each one of you. I'm encouraged to work with each one of you. I challenge you to keep focus for our students and our staff. I believe public education has enough enemies out there. We are under scrutiny of everything that is being done, every product that we bring forward, every, the curriculum that we bring forward, every move that we're making is being scrutinized, and so I'm fine with that, but what I want is to always keep in mind that we have students that we represent, that we are caretakers for, and they are depending upon us to function in a way that's efficient for them, that teachers can have respect and support, and know that this board, when they bring an issue, that we're going to apply every bit of what we bring to it to make a difference, to see if we can't shift how it's coming down for our students. As each one of you will be making your own board school visits over the next few months and this next year, you'll be engaging to know students and staff and issues at each school. Those are things that we can work together on, see how we can approach. This last year, we've had a few things that have been left undone, and we have to take all of that work and put it together and produce the outcome that's needful for our district. I agree that we're going to have to advocate, and each one of us now as elected people, to advocate to other elected folks, our funding needs and our staffing needs, and as we move forward this next coming year, I'm encouraged because I think there's a shift coming, I think there's a transition coming, and I think there's a change coming, and part of that is going to come through the work that we're going to produce. So the challenge to each of you is to come prepared, come willing to do the work, and be efficient with what we do. I appreciate each one of you because each one of you, you all have your own strengths. You know who you are, you know the people you represent, and so we have to move forward, and we choose to. And I'm going to tell you, I'm probably your most reluctant leader at this point. It was, I'm overwhelmed, actually, so I just, I know that my strength comes from my faith, and I will be leaning heavy on that like I've always done, but I've always tried to represent the community and these students and staff. That's where my heart has been. Coming on this board was the hardest decision that I've ever made, because I told my students I would be in a different position to make policy and to make it better for them. I'm not always sure that I've done that, but that is my hope, that is the faith that I have, that is we move forward. So, thank you. That's all my comments.
Move to adjourn. Second?
We adjourned.